This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as the body we congregate in these council chambers, we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Here.
All members are present, not surprisingly. We have a couple of requests to amend the agenda. The first is a letter from T.A. Brown, Secretary to the Clerk of Counsel regarding the liquor Trex license for Hyde Park L.L.C., LB at Hyde Park L.L.C., and one from Jean Tolbert and the Norwood Health Department regarding a mosquito control grant at the health department. Mr. Mumper.
I move we amend the agenda as you just stated.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. The minutes of the April 25, 2017 meeting were distributed via email. It's your pleasure. Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have one request to address council, but it's not on an agenda item, so we'll take it up a little bit later on. We have no reports of standing committees. We'll move on to the second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance adopting the updated signed regulation code under Chapter 1321 of the Norwood Codified Ordinances. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I would like to recommend that we have the second reading.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, question for Greg, a bit here.
Greg, can you come on up? And we may have more than one question for you.
Greg Ors, contract planner for the City of Norwood.
Just real quick, being this signed code went through the planning commission for their approval and they recommended it to council, if by some chance council would say, this is a little restrictive on this, or this we need to make more restrictive, they would think, if we would come up with any suggestions to either one of those, either direction there, would it then have to go back to planning commission, or could council make a line item change in that ordinance?
Yes, I don't believe it needs to go back to planning commission. Definitely this body has the right to make amendments as they see fit.
Okay.
Great. I checked with the law department about that, whether like we even needed to have a public hearing, and he said no, that since it was by ordinance that we could make changes to it. That's your understanding too?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or anything? Mr. Bonzo.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. So, I noticed there's like a new smoke shop on Montgomery Road next to the Payless Shoe Store, and in, I mean, and in this shop, there are lots of things that I think would be prohibited under this code here, but one of them that I'm not sure if it's prohibited is these like tube lighting that's around all the windows that flash and go different colors. Is that addressed here, or is that addressed maybe somewhere else?
Yeah, it's not prohibited in the code. It's, if we look at the strikeout language, it's on page 23. And it's exposed neon tube illumination is permitted on permanent signs in non-residential zoning districts only. So whether, I think that could be in question of whether it was a permanent or non-permanent. And I think it then goes into enforcement, because you do see them in sort of restaurants and/or bars seem to have them in the window as well. So, that gets a little bit into coverage and inside display sign, which gets a little tricky. But so far, that is allowed. Now, we could, there's nothing, I do have a couple articles here on the, a couple of the questions, like the sign waivers that we discussed last time, and also the billboards. If I can hand those out, those have definite, definite legal issues related to them, but this is one that is, is literally just, you could either prohibit it completely or, or not. There's, there's not a legal First Amendment right on that. It's just a type of sign.
Gotcha. And this particular thing that I'm referring to, I don't know, I don't quite know if it's a neon tube illumination. I mean, it's like, it's some kind of a plast, it is a plastic tubing, and it's just around the windows. So, is that something that's traditionally like done in a sign code, or would that have, be prohibited in other parts of the?
I think I know what you're talking about. It's just the strip lighting.
Yes.
That's around the window.
Yes.
As opposed to like a neon sign.
Exactly.
That I'm not sure of, to be honest, of whether that's, I don't know. I'd have to check in on that.
Okay, I'll keep.
It's a little obscure.
I'll keep asking, because it looks terrible, and to me at least.
Now, it could be, because it's interior, probably, or I don't know if it's, it's on the interior portion of the window, or whether.
Yes.
So, what, that kind of goes into, it's a little trickier when it's interior. So as long as they're not covering a certain portion of the window, a certain percentage, I don't think we have regulations on color emitting from the interior of that, but that's something I can look into.
Yeah, it would be definitely appreciated if possible there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Sankar.
What's common on that? And you're kind of want to slippery slope there as well, because all of a sudden, a Christmas sign, everybody down Montgomery Road puts Christmas like on their side, and this guy said, well, what's the difference if these are red, white, and blue?
Scrooge.
I got them in there for, you know, Memorial Day, and what's the difference between now and Christmas? So I think, like Greg said, I think it's kind of a tricky, I know what you're saying, but I just.
Yeah, I mean, the open, like, the open sign in the window that's flashing, I'm pretty sure that would not be allowed under this. Am I correct on that?
That's what I'm not sure about, open signs like in the window. It's, it's more for outside signs and displays in window, or get a little bit trickier.
So what if somebody put a strobe light, if you don't mind me? Yeah, thank you.
There's a certain amount, I think, of external illumination that comes out, so it has to go by that standard and statute that's in the, that as a distraction or as a safety concern, that that's how it would have to be. So it would have to exceed sort of either the foot candles that we have associated in here, or if it was counted as electronic messaging, which would be, you know, unsure of, that it wasn't going off at too quick a pace or a frequency.
Gotcha. Okay. It might be separate from this code, so I'll keep asking questions and doing some research on that.
Yeah, no, and I'll research that a little. I hate to say anything off the cuff. I've done some research on the couple of the questions that are there, but without, some things that are so specific like that, without doing a little bit of research and stuff to, to know for sure.
Great.
Did you want to address the things that?
Yeah, the two that were brought up the last time here was the sign waivers, and I'll pass this around here when we're, we're done here, but, and the changing of billboards, or not allowing electronic billboards. And it's back and forth. It really goes state by state, seems to have specific issues in law cases, unfortunately related to it. So some states, if there's an all-out ban on electronic billboards, then there is invariably a lawsuit. And in some states, that has been upheld, and some states it hasn't. So, those are the ones that are tricky, whether we want to be a defining, I didn't see a specific Ohio one, whether we're interested in being the testing, testing the law on that. I think that's something we'd rather avoid. And sign waivers are the same way. It's seen as, it gets into a tricky business, because you're, you may be, it may be, like we said last time, a sign, a person holding up a protest sign, or a free speech sign, so you're getting into some tricky free speech issues there. And I'll pass these around, and you can comment on that. So where it's not, so far, it's not totally out of question, but they just seem to come with legal issues involved.
Any other questions?
Sorry, one more minute. There is a provision in here, after I saw there, that there will be, no digital billboards are allowed within 500 feet of a residential district. So I think that would cover the vast majority of Montgomery Road. You'd think there's, there's residential districts within almost 200 feet along the whole stretch. And I think another thing that we're seeing is that when they're coming in for applications for these digital billboards, they're typically slightly larger, and they really want the ones that are near the highways. That's their big sort of draw, and that's their big change. And when they do that, and the City of Norwood's already done it, you can negotiate with them to remove billboards in other locations, and we're already seeing that. I think there's some, at least two or three that are being removed from Montgomery Road and other locations in the city, so that they can increase their size potentially near the highway. But hopefully, as time goes on, the market may potentially address some of our larger concerns with the billboards in the city.
And with this, as I recall, when we passed the ordinance for TriHealth, that included a billboard on the roof of that flex building? And is that? That, I'm not sure. I don't know. Because that was part of the agreement, I think, so it would be, I'm wondering what the implications of this are in terms of, I don't think it's, I wouldn't think it would be within 500 feet of a residential district, being where it is, but I don't know.
Well.
You think it would? Mr. Sankar?
I would think, I would say, it would cross over four lanes plus.
Of traffic, plus the curb and the hill, and I would think that would be okay. I mean, I, I just, I just want to point out that we passed that as part of the agreement, so.
And if they got it up before, the code, it would be a grandfather clause where we would be.
Okay.
They would be grandfathered for that use. And since we're not doing any provisions that are specifically going after those grandfather clauses, after a period of time, that, that might be okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The motion on the floor is to have the second reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance adopting updated sign regulation code under Chapter 1321 of the Norwood Codified Ordinances.
Excuse me, we have no introductory readings of resolutions or ordinances, administration reports, so we'll move on to requests to address council. Mr. Kent Schneider and Sandy Keane, if you want to come forward. Give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Thank you very much. I will proceed first, and Ms. Keane will be next.
Sure.
First, I want to address President Council, the mayor's not here, but all the other members of council. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees, the Center for Addiction Treatment in Cincinnati. We've been in existence as a servicing organization for addiction, starting with alcoholics, when that was an issue many years ago, the major issue then, and very little drugs, but now it's shifted quite a bit, and you can't pick up a paper today without seeing statements of the heroin epidemic in our area, okay? And it's very serious, and we are faced with, Ohio, the State of Ohio, unfortunately, fortunately has the most overdoses of heroin in any part of the country, so they're the most. Hamilton County leads the state in the most overdoses of deaths. So we have a very serious problem here and need help. And that's why we're here, we're here to ask for some help. We are in the process of building a larger treatment facilities downtown. We're next down to the museum center, I don't know if all of you have been there, or any of you have been there, but it's downtown, and we're adding significantly to that, and through public funding, and, and also from the state, and from the county who is doing it as well. So, we're seeking, approaching all the local governments to consider making some contribution to helping us take care of this epidemic that we're faced with. We are seeking your support, and have had the support of some of the communities so far. We're still in the process of making runs. We've, City of Cincinnati is fairly substantial, City of Undale, City of Montgomery, City of Mariemont, and Hamilton County prosecutors so far. So we do have a good start, and we feel that we have a product that is very much needed for our community, all of us, our citizens, and that's who we service, and we feel that we would appreciate much your help. So I'll introduce Sandy Keane, our president and CEO, and she'll give you more details on how we operate, what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you for the opportunity. CAT's been a business for 46 years, and we're very proud of the.
I thought it was 47.
It will be soon, in June.
June.
Yeah. Of the state-of-art addiction treatment services that we've provided over that period of time. The services that we do are really essential pieces of the continuum of care for addiction treatment. We do medical detox. We have currently 18 beds for that, and in the whole state of Ohio, there's only 200 certified detox beds. That's certified by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. So, we've got 18 out of 200 for the state. We also do residential services, basically it's rehab, when somebody says we're going to rehab, that's what they mean. We have 42 beds for residential services. We also have a fairly robust medication-assisted treatment program using primarily Suboxone, but some VivaTrol. And we have gambling addiction treatment services also. So currently, the opioid and addiction issues are unprecedented, as Ken said, and it's reflected in every single community. I took a look at the census of admissions for January of 16 through March of 17, and we had 75 patients from Norwood zip code in that period of time. Doesn't count for the admissions from the QRT team, your quick response team, but, but those are an addition to those numbers. We have to come together as a community, as what Ken indicated, if we have any hope at all of bending this curve downward. Hamilton County and Norwood has played a big piece of the Hamilton County Heroin Coalition, so you're really to be commended for that effort. And I think that becomes the model for the state, as well as the nation, on how do we get a grip on this? And that includes law enforcement, first responders, treatment, prevention, all of those things that have to work together. And because of the early process, early adopters with this county of that kind of model, I think we really have something that we can be proud of. The quick response teams from Norwood, I'm not quite sure how many admissions we've had from that process, but once addiction services goes out and meets with that person who's overdosed, we're the place that they will come, because we're the first line of entry into treatment, if you will. So we need to expand services. Quite frankly, if we don't expand services, all we're doing is rearranging the deck chairs on Titanic, because there's nowhere for them to go, once they've been identified as being willing. So our board took a look at this a couple years ago and said, we can and we will do something. As Ken mentioned, we are building a 22,000-square-foot building on our three-acre campus, and when that is completed, which will be sometime this summer, which, ah! We're going to add another 15 detox beds, so we'll go from 18 to 33. We'll be adding some more of the residential beds. We're adding new services, mental health services, which is new for us, and also new primary care clinic that's specifically targeted to meet the total healthcare needs of the population that we serve. So it's a very unique process. We've, our total goal is 5.6 million, or 5.7 million. We're at 4.6 million now, so we're trying to close that, that last gap. So, we're, like Ken said, we're approaching all of the communities. We know you're not going to fill in a $1.7 million gap.
Can you fill in our one?
Exactly. But there is.
It's feasible, right?
There is a pot of money that you could potentially consider, and that would be drug forfeiture money. The Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office is using that forfeiture dollars as part of their contribution. So it is one opportunity, if you will. But it's not just a one-way street. I want to invite you to come tour CAT, so you can see where your citizens are coming into treatment. And if you have a need here, that your first responders aren't filling like a forum or education on the use of Narcan, because it's not just the first responders who are using it, my doc is willing to come out and do a training on how to use it, and write the prescription for you, for whoever wants it, that can be filled at pretty much any pharmacy, if you will. So we'd be happy to do something like that. If you have a forum that you're putting together just on education in general around addiction, we'd be happy to be a part of that, too. So, what I would like to leave you with is that, really appreciate Norwood's leadership in stepping out and saying, yes, we will be a part of this solution. That really is very commendable. And I understand that first responders get frustrated, because the person they just brought back to life doesn't always seem grateful for that process. But I really want to encourage them, and encourage you to encourage them, because it makes a difference. CAT has, we're, we're round-the-clock service, so we're staff 24/7. Out of, I have 77 staff members. Over half of them are in recovery. Most of them came through CAT or CAT alumni, and the range of clean time, if you will, is anywhere from two years to 25 years. So recovery works. Treatment works. People do get better. It's not just always the person who doesn't want to do anything differently. So there, this is a challenging project or a problem, but it is very much worth saving that next life. So I appreciate the opportunity to let you know a little bit about what we're doing, and encourage you to get involved with us, and we would like to be involved with you. If you have some process that I need to speak with someone else about, the drug forfeiture funds, I would welcome that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Any questions? I'm pretty sure that the Norwood Health Department is part of that Dawn program.
Yeah.
Through Hamilton County, and so they have been, they're working on, I was just working with them last week, working on protocols and stuff, so that they'll have some Narcan available and do some training at the health departments, that other people can go there and be trained on how to use Narcan.
If there's any other, making the invitation, in their way with it, we can, you know, be helpful to you. We'd like to do that.
Thank you so much. And we, when I first started at the health department, and they talked about the CAT house, I was like.
That's our abbreviation.
Center for Addiction, for Addiction Treatment.
Within reach.
Yes.
So, yes, I am.
But if you talk to any law enforcement officer or health person, they'll know what the CAT house is.
They know exactly what it is. Yes, they do.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to unfinished business. Any unfinished business?
Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, 5141 Carthage Avenue is probably the worst vacant property in the city. It has vines growing all over it, the roof has a massive hole in it, the floors are caving in, and mold is growing inside. The building has been vacant for at least 10 years. And so previously, I've requested the law department to investigate the options that we have with regards to the property. And then, last week, I reached out to the Port Authority on direction from the Madam President there, but I reached out to them and talked with their general counsel about the property. He's going to pitch it tomorrow to their Hamilton County Land Bank Committee, so, and hopefully, if they decide they want to go after it, they're going to use an expedited foreclosure process, and hopefully try to take control of the property. So, I'll keep this council updated, but it's something that, you know, it's a great lead that's very exciting that we haven't had, because we don't have the money to demolish the property. So, if they do get hold of the property, they will demolish it, and then they'll try to figure out, they'll deed it over to the adjacent property owners, or if somebody wants to actually buy it from them, they'll sell it to them, so. Anyways, and if anybody has any questions about that, too, just feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Mumper.
I'd like to call a street committee meeting for next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, here in council chambers.
And the agenda?
Streets.
Streets? Okay. So, Tuesday, the 16th?
Yes.
May the 16th at 6 o'clock here in council chambers.
It's my oldest son's birthday, too, so, may I get out and take him out to dinner?
Drive up and down the streets. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mumper. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, Norwood is one of four primary dispatch centers in the county. So the other three are City of Cincinnati, there's a Hamilton County Dispatch Center, you've got Amberly Village, and then Norwood. And so, estimates that I've heard show that we spend, you know, $800,000 to $1 million a year to run our 911 center, but, you know, this council's requested estimates from, I guess, the administration or the police department, and we really haven't gotten those back yet. So, estimates are just that, because I don't know exactly what it is. But currently, we only serve Norwood residents. So, I'd like to refer to the Streets and Public Safety Committee, the task of looking into whether we could get neighboring municipalities to route their calls to Norwood instead of Hamilton County Dispatch, so that we can make better use of our very expensive, state-of-the-art equipment in our dispatch center.
There, there may be some discussions going on with that currently, but.
We, if we routed, I mean, you know, it can be a very short agenda item, but I'd like to at least have it notched on the committee.
All right, place that in committee. You may want to speak to the mayor prior to that meeting?
And I have reached out to the mayor as well today, so hopefully, I'll hear back from him this week. So, like I said, it could be a very short agenda item, if he's working on things already.
Any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, I believe tomorrow, on May the 10th, SORTA, which is the Southwestern Ohio Regional Transit Authority, they're having a community forum, basically an open discussion on where they're looking to go over the next few years, and looking for citizens' input to some of their ideas. This community outreach session will be held tomorrow, May the 10th, from 2:30 to 3:30 at Oakley Recreation Center. And in, a number of our residents are serviced by SORTA with the bus system that throws, flows through the city of Norwood. If anybody has an interest in giving their opinion on what they're professing to do, I'm more than welcome to show up there, 2:30 to 3:30, the Oakley Recreation Center tomorrow, May the 10th. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, this weekend is the infamous Norwood Community Wide Yard Sale, both Friday and Saturday. Hopefully, the rain will hold off. I think it's supposed to be a little bit better. Held off for somebody's party last Saturday. So hopefully, it'll hold off for the residents here Friday and Saturday. And there is a list of the people who have yard sales. Is that on our website, or is that on?
Norwood-Ohio.com.
Go ahead and repeat that, if you don't mind.
Norwood-Ohio.com.
Thank you, David. So, get out and support the people that are having their yard sales Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for April.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of April 2017. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Mumper.
I move a letter we received and filed, and I'd like to thank Mr. Collin for keeping the dollars up around $20,000.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Next is a letter from T.A. Brown regarding the L.B. Hyde Park Trex license.
To Norwood City Council, regarding the Trex request from the State of Ohio Liquor Control, A-Trex 4957309, I sent requests to all department heads requesting any objections. I received an email from the Health Department attached stating no objections. I also received a call from the Tax Commissioner, Chuck Barlow, stating no objections. I received no other responses regarding this request. Timothy A. Brown, Secretary, Clerk of Council.
So at the last meeting, we didn't receive and file it, we just asked to verify that it had been sent out to the various departments, and Mr. Brown did that to inform us that only two of those departments had responded. So what is your pleasure? Mr. Blair.
I did see an email from the Fire Chief as well saying no objections. Just add that in there.
Thank you. Mr. Sankar?
I recommend that you let me be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Next is a letter from Jean Tolbert in the Norwood Health Department regarding a mosquito control grant.
Good afternoon. The Ohio Environmental Protection Agency has completed the final application review process for the 2017 mosquito control, MCG, program. We are excited to inform you that your application was selected for funding. We are working as quickly as possible to prepare a MCG contract for your signature. However, please remember the MCG contract does not become effective until it has been signed by the Director of Ohio EPA. MCG monies cannot be used for activities conducted prior to the effective date of the MCG contract. Furthermore, grant monies will not be available until July 2017. The 2017 MCG contract, along with further instructions, will be distributed via email. Attached, you will find an invitation to our May 2017 announcement event being held in Columbus. If you have questions concerning the grant program, please contact Adam Cummins at adam.cummins@epa.ohio.gov or by phone at 614-728-5328. Thank you. Adam Cummins, Environmental Planner, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yep. I move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Note, this is for $7,500, and Mrs. Tolbert confirmed for me this afternoon it will be for control, mosquito control activities for residents and businesses. So like if there's standing water or ponds, there are things called mosquito dunks that can be purchased so that the environmental health director, who is certified in that, can use those, or for spraying and stuff for mosquitoes, both on residential and business and city-owned property. So nice with all of the bad publicity that mosquitoes get these days. The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Mr. Mumper.
I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.